We will reconvene at 4:28 PM, and I'll turn it over to Tom.
Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to introduce our next and final team. Steve Doric representing his team with Prioritize, LGJV. Thank you.
Good evening, late afternoon. I'm Pete Doric, and working on this project has been just wonderful so far. I'd like to introduce our team and get started. Dean Marchetto, Dean is our architect and planner. We have Greg Garfield from Garfield Public Private, and we have Steve Mann who's curated our team and put us all together to be here today. If Dean's got a presentation to make, then we'll let him go first.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Dean Marchetto. I'm an architect, a planner, and I'm a fellow in the American Institute of Architects, and I am founding principal of my firm, MHS, a firm that I began 40 years ago that specializes in projects just like this, mixed-use downtown projects and plans. I'm not joined today by my partner, Anton Nellison, who is halfway around the world on a trip, but Tony Nellison is an educator, professional planner, and an author. And when it comes to public engagement, Tony wrote the book on public engagement. In fact, this is his book, Community Visioning for Public Place-Making. We have hundreds of projects that we've done together, and I submitted a portfolio, and I have a copy of it with me I can leave behind. But rather than talk about our projects, I'd rather take the little time that we have to talk about your project here in Waco.
Tom's to the rescue here.
Thank you. So, this is a picture that we saw in the RFQ, a very exciting photograph, and it helped me shape my ideas around what we could work on here in Waco. This picture shows a terrific city hall in the middle of a public square, albeit filled with cars, but it's surrounded by four walls, retail on the bottom. It's a very active place, and we no longer have this. We lost this, as you know. But if you could imagine a space like this, surrounded by walls, with the cars taken out and removed to parking garages sort of on the outside, and the inside filled with pavement, landscaping, shade trees, and create a sense of space, and then take this space and connect it to others like it along a pedestrian pathway, a series of spaces, that would be an idea that we feel would be appropriate here, and we'd like to present for Waco. Sort of like an emerald necklace of spaces all connected by pedestrian streets. So, one of the questions in the RFQ was, "What's the best part of the plan that we had read?" I guess it was the Gensler Plan in the RFQ. And this was clearly the best slide, and I agree with this. Great places don't happen accidentally. They are not just a collection of buildings. They are product of careful curation of diverse, interactive, connected, aspirational, and sublime experiences. We agree with this completely. This is the heart and soul of our plan. So, this is a 3D view of the site, and the site here is outlined in red. It's 60 acres of public land on the Brazos. And as you've heard from the others, it's an incredible opportunity. It has all the ingredients for making a vision, reimagine the waterfront, and meet the community's goals and aspirations for the site. And this was the 3D vision put forth in the Gensler Plan. We think this is a good start, and we're going to build on this idea. The plan calls for five separate and distinct districts. We think that all the uses, it's a great, healthy mix of uses. We agree with that. We're not sure about the single-family homes, but we think that these uses could be more intermingled, instead of into separate districts, but rather they can be joined together with an overlapping of uses that would include multifamily development with commercial, ground-floor, active spaces on the ground floor throughout all of the part of the plan. And by that, I mean, you know, density is a city's currency. You know, oftentimes, we can't pay for public improvements with taxpayer dollars. It's too expensive. But if you can upzone a property to create more residential density, you can create ways to produce public benefits like roads, and parks, and schools, and firehouses, and those kinds of things. That could all be done with upzoning. And I think if you use and employ an incentive-based, form-based code over this whole plan, you'll be able to accomplish that. By example, this is a project we finished in '21. This was a project that's in Jersey City, New Jersey, and it's in a 10-story zone. But through a visioning process we went through with the city, the community indicated their desire for an art center. So, the city zoned the property with a bonus. This is a 30-story bonus on top of a 10-story zone to give back a theater, 125-seat black box theater, together with a gallery, and a permanent home for a nonprofit group called The Art House. And this is up, finished, and very successful. 400 units is about 40 stories. But back to Waco. We believe that the University Parks Drive is a barrier to the waterfront. We concur with the previous presenter. And that the first thing we would do is maybe move, remove that portion of University Parks Drive. We think that it's very important that the vehicular access in this plan be limited to only essential vehicular access, meaning that only the roads that are necessary to get to the buildings would be important and would want to be kept, thereby allowing a more of a pedestrian network to permeate and create a connection from the community to the waterfront without having a barrier of University Parks Drive. So, we would terminate it at the city, at the, I guess that would be Austin Avenue. Make a circle there, and then create a pedestrian area from within. Now, we know that parking for the public has to be convenient and easy, but we don't want cars inside a development. We'd like to kind of suggest that this become more of a pedestrian place, and that we would build mixed-use buildings in those three rectangular squares. And in those mixed-use buildings would be public parking garages. And anywhere from either one of those three public parking garages, you'd be able to be no more than a five-minute walk to the ball field, to the arts and entertainment, to the civic areas in the plan. But that would somehow keep the cars out. Of course, every building in the plan would have direct access to a road, but we can do that through a plan design. The next aspect of the plan would to be create a pedestrian network. So, in this plan, you see these, Tony and I took a sketch paper, and we sketched out over the top of a Google Earth map to kind of throw our ideas down on paper. And we came up with a pedestrian network that works both left and right, and up and down on the page, so that no one would ever need to cross a road except maybe at Washington Street, because that road would go through. That plan could look like this. This is basically an overlay with a pedestrian network, shown in kind of like the beige-colored pavers connecting the different parts of the plan and the city hall network having a pedestrian access through it. This maintains the green waterfront that was in the Gensler Plan. Last weekend, I went to Washington, and I went specifically to look at this development. This is called the Wharf. It's a new development down in Washington, DC. And this is an example of the kind of vitality and vibrancy that I think we can kind of accomplish here on the Brazos. This plan has a waterfront that's all pedestrian. Buildings are serviced from the back. It's mixed-use. They have residential uses on top of commercial uses. One idea we had here was maybe to float a barge out in the Brazos and have a pool, water taxis, landscaped areas, bars, restaurants, seating areas, the kinds of places where people want to be, action. People want to have that vibrancy. This could be more of a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week type of place. So, we took that idea, and we said, "What happens if we overlay that concept on top of our plan?" And we came up with a concept, too. We call it the Maximum Experience Plan. And in that plan, we pushed the ball field up to the water's edge, and we pulled the lake or the river back into a marina, where they would maybe pull into where Fourth Street would be. And you could have sailgating there and a series of pedestrian walkways. The black boxes represent the building forms, and the paved areas are shown in the beige color. So, we took the mobility plan, which is the roads in blue, and we overlaid them on top of the plan, and we laid out a pedestrian network that, like I said, would only have to cross a road at Austin. Oh, I'm sorry. That would be Washington. And we overlaid that on top of our plan and came up with a plan that has a series of pedestrian networks. So, the red network is one that would be along Fourth Street, connect to a residential zone in the parking garage behind the ball field. And then we come down to City Hall Circle. And that pedestrian trail would have mixed-use buildings, attachment to a road for parking, commercial on the ground floor, and reimagine what Fourth Street could be like. Then the gold plan, along the river, of course, is the River Walk. And along the lower half of that drawing, you see, would be flush with the water with a wharf-like type of edge that would be pedestrian, connect up around the marina, come around to the ball field, and it would be anchored by the ball field on one end and the arts, civic, and arts and entertainment area on the lower end. And then the yellow trail would be one that goes across the river along Washington Street, through City Hall Plaza. And these trails and pedestrian streets would overlap, and so that you could move from one to the other and completely create a pedestrian experience, car-free except for Washington Street, Washington Ave. And then finally, the purple plan that you'd see there on the lower left is a connection spine from the garage through the arts and entertainment area of the plan. Then we took that, and we popped it up into a 3D sketch to get a sense of what the building heights might feel like. And this is what we came up with. And then this is our final plan. And the final plan, basically, you could see is a fully pedestrian-oriented plan with commercial mixed-use buildings. And the individual components of the plan are shown, enumerated. The ball field, the marina, the residential buildings that are mixed-use, and the pedestrian trails, along with arts and entertainment portions of the plan on the lower portion of the plan. We do everything in a 3D modeling, so if we were going to be doing this, it would be a 3D visualization that you could walk through visually as we present this, as we move forward. And that concludes my presentation on our ideas, and we're excited to be here presenting this, and we think we would be a great choice for Waco.
Thanks, Dean.
I'll hand it over to Pete.
Yeah, we have spent our time really visioning what Waco's long-term could be. And you've heard from the other teams that everybody's got deep experience, and obviously they do. Our team has equally deep experience. I'll get into that in one second. And coming together with this kind of diverse team, with these diverse experiences, I think makes us actually stronger. So, we've brought in Legends as one of our major players. My background is that I was the Development Director for Legends, and most recently, after I had got about halfway through working on some of the bigger projects that they were working on, as you know, and I didn't have a big part to do with it, but a small part was SoFi Field in Los Angeles. I'd left Legends, went off on my own. They have since called me back. And I presented recently to the Chicago Bears on behalf of Legends as the Development Director. I also brought Legends into two projects that I'm working on. One is a hockey arena and a new, press is here. This is off the record. Alpharetta, Georgia's getting an expansion team. So, we've got 133 acres. We're building a new arena. And happy to say Ace Carter, who's a 12-year player with National Hockey League, is leading that, which means we'll be the first black-owned hockey team in the NHL. We also have another project, and Legends and I are working on that. I'm the Development Director for that. Legends is our project managers. Same thing in Nashville, Tennessee. We're working with Dave Stewart. I don't know if anybody here is old enough to remember Dave. Four-time World Series player. He was a pitcher. Four-time 20-game winner, MVP of the World Series. Also was the, he was the GM for the Arizona Diamondbacks. He's been an executive with baseball for a long, long time. We are also, off the record, actually, it's in the press already, we're bringing Major League Baseball to Nashville, Tennessee. Very similar to this. We're on the river. We're working with TSU, historically black university, to cite that baseball stadium on their property. And happy to also say Dave will be the first African-American owner of a baseball team. We are funding both of those deals. We have capital partners. New York Life is one of our capital partners in Alpharetta, Georgia, and they're bringing equity, and as they say, "We are a candy store of debt." So, we like that. In Nashville, we have two other partners, one of whom is Golden Jacket. I don't know if anybody is familiar with them. That's Emmett Smith's company. And Emmett's our partner. Chris Paul, Vernon Merrill runs that company. We've been in discussions with them about Waco. I did mention the other day when we were here that they'd be interested in coming in. I got the thumbs up from Vernon, who's the president of Emmett's companies last night, saying, "Make sure you tell them we are the co-GPs on this project." And of course, they do a lot of residential development. And they understand, and this is interesting, when you're building a baseball stadium, who wants to live next door to you? What kind of units are you building? Who are those people? What do they want? Typically, they're a little bit younger, skewing a little bit younger. They're going to come home, throw their jacket on the bed, and they're going out. And where do they want to go? We need to fit these people into the RDNE, the residential, the dining, and the entertainment, not force them into what we think they want, but really understand the demographic. And as we start building residential, you have mixed-income residential, so we're an opportunity for everybody. Same thing with office. We need to figure out office so that we can attract the right users. And then who are those people that are working there, and what do they want? So, it's not monolithic. We really believe in mixing this up. We also have Rayner sitting back here. Played pro ball and played at Baylor. And Rayner's on our team. He's a local Waconian, happy to say. And we have on our baseball team, and I think this is also important, we have Greg Lee, who was the attorney for the American League, is currently doing all the financing for the Rays. And amongst this team, we understand that minor league baseball isn't what it was. Right? It's becoming more and more attractive as people understand this is entertainment. But really importantly, unless you're talking to Chris Manorak at Major League Baseball, you're not getting a team. You're not just saying, "I'm putting a team here." Chris runs this for MLB. We know Chris. MLB is putting a strong hand on minor league baseball. They want to start putting teams where they need to be. We've already had discussions about coming to Waco. And we're ready to bring a team here. Obviously, we're bringing a pro team to Nashville, which is pretty exciting, and we're looking for a minor league location. As I said, I work with Legends, and Legends is going to be a lead on this. They, obviously, talk about other projects. The Star, I know the mayor's been to the Star. I think we brought all the other folks back there to the Star to see it. That's one of our projects, right? And I think everybody's seen pictures today of the Star and of SoFi. Well, you know, that's Legends. And we've talked about, you know, who is Legends? You know, they do project management. They're going to right-size this field for us for current and future markets. They're going to do seat and suite sales. They're going to do the forecasting, the food and beverage, the naming rights. They're going to be our all-purpose team. We'll put together a marketing and PR team underneath them. But also, as important, you know, and we've heard this, ASM is one of the biggest, or is the biggest operator of venues. Legends is buying ASM. So, we'll be bringing ASM to this project as well. Just one more point. We talk about community engagement. Our Nashville project, we had over 105 open houses with the residents. We've got several pieces of land. That's just on one of the pieces of land. So, we understand community engagement. We know how important it is. And we fully expect that this is going to be as robust, if not more. And with that, I've spoken quite a bit. I'm going to turn it over to Steve briefly, and then we'll hear from Greg Garfield.
Sure. And I could be pretty brief. I'm Stephen Mann, general partner of Prioritize Ventures. Something that a lot of the other presenters passed over were private financing. They're using that there isn't a scope of work in order to dictate how capital will come in. I could say to you that we've been raising capital for over three years for a specific strategy that almost fits your criteria exactly. It's for, actually, let me some notes. Give me one moment. Sort of a competitive advantage we have is a partnership with Merrill, who's Bank of America's securities arm. Something I'd like to highlight is they offer us a custodial fund partnership. They provide us with access to over 1,600 family offices and ultra-high net worth individuals. Together with Merrill, we've taken on the project to market and discuss it with great length, utilizing our conceptual design as some preliminary feasibility. The feedback we've received from these large family offices has been overwhelmingly positive, enough to have multiple pledges to participate. Our financial commitments through Merrill come ready, willing, and able, prepared to curate for the scope of work. Another advantage is in our capital procurement strategy. We've learned bringing an ESG-focused approach to fundraising can significantly broaden our investor base. We now have raised committed capital for not only predevelopment work, but significant private equity participation in ground-up development. Given current trends in the capital markets worldwide, the demand still exceeds supply for true ESG investments, and your downtown redevelopment plan couldn't be a better fit.
Great. Thank you. I think everybody here knows Greg. Probably doesn't need much of an introduction. Garfield Public Private has done extensive work on the civic side, hotel and convention centers. He just did three during COVID. I don't think anybody else in the country has done three during COVID, so quite the remarkable track record.
Thanks, Pete. I'm really excited to be here today. Excited to be partnered with Pete and Steve and Dean on this, and really excited about what's happening in Waco already. And I think it's time, I think it's a great time to capitalize on that with this mixed-use development downtown. Garfield was invited to join this team because of our expertise. As the name implies, we specialize in public-private partnerships, or P3 projects. And we've been doing this for over 25 years. We've developed and financed several billion dollars of public-private developments across the country, including probably 600 million worth in Texas. As Pete mentioned, we opened three hotels this year, full-service hotels and convention centers in Abilene, Baytown, and Conroe, Texas. Baytown and Conroe are Hyatt Regency Hotels with convention centers. And Abilene's downtown convention center has a DoubleTree by Hilton, which, if you get a chance to see it, it is the nicest DoubleTree you've ever set foot in. They're very proud of it, and the experience has been so great there that Robert Hannah, city manager, who's become a very good friend of ours, has invited us to help them with the renovation of their convention center, the creation of a festival district. We closed a street between the hotel and the convention center that will become this festival district. And we're helping them with naming rights and sponsorships for the overall complex, as well as talking about some other major developments in Abilene. We are also the developer of the Buddy Holly Hall of Performing Arts in Lubbock, opened in 2021, had been a goal of the city of Lubbock for over 30 years. They had gone through eight different master plans, market studies, and committees, trying to figure out how to get the project done. And when they were ready to actually move forward, they asked us to lead that process because we had completed the Durham Performing Arts Center, which I know was mentioned in one of the earlier conversations. We were the developer of the Durham Performing Arts Center and worked closely with the city of Durham, as well as Jim Goodman and Capital Broadcasting Corporation, the owners of the Durham Bulls Athletic Park, and actually brought in Capital Broadcasting Corporation and Jim Goodman as naming rights partners in the Durham Performing Arts Center. We also, I think I saw the Eccles Theater in Salt Lake City in one of the earlier presentations. HKS was part of that team. HKS was the architect of record on that project. Our company was the developer. So, we developed the Eccles Theater in downtown Salt Lake City. Also included, we had a development partner that developed in the air rights over the Eccles Theater, 400,000-square-foot office building. All of it was a complex urban infill redevelopment project. So, we've got tons of performing arts center and theater experience. I think we've developed more than any developer in the country in the performing arts and theater space. And we've got tons of museum experience as well. In fact, we were just selected last month to handle the renovation of MEA, which is the Minneapolis Institute of Art, 1920s-era facility there, undergoing a major renovation. And we've done several other museums in Texas. So, we're a part of the team to bring our expertise in public-private development, including performing arts centers and cultural experience, hotel, hotel and convention center experience, and museums. And what am I forgetting?
Finance.
Well, the finance. This is what we think distinguishes us from most other developers or project managers out there is we do everything that you think of that a normal developer would do in terms of overseeing entitlements, site selection, development, design, construction oversight. But what we think really distinguishes us is our expertise in overcoming financial, legal, or political hurdles to getting projects done. So, coming up with very creative deal structures. In the 25-plus years we've been doing this, none of our projects have required general obligation bond financing or the full faith and credit of our public partners. We're seeking to use other creative mechanisms like tax-exempt hotel revenue bonds. Or another option for a hotel is a traditional P3 approach where we raise the private debt and equity for the project, and the gap that cannot be financed with private debt and equity is a public participation that comes into the project. That's how we developed the Overton Hotel and Conference Center in Lubbock. That was our first project in Lubbock. And then on the private side, we do a lot of philanthropic fundraising, naming rights, sponsorships, premium seats and suites in connection with theaters and sports venues that we develop. And so, we're going to bring that kind of creativity here to help overcome your challenges. And I knew what I was forgetting now. The government, the new desired government facility where you want to consolidate, where you're leasing spaces or occupying spaces in a number of other facilities downtown and would like to be in a new venue. That's bread-and-butter stuff for us. Actually, that's relatively easy when you compare it to financing a performing arts center or a hotel. But we've done a lot of creative lease-back structures with annual appropriation leases, City Court of Atlanta, New York State's Department of Transportation headquarters, Reno's Public Safety Training Center. So, we have a lot of experience in doing that and can help you determine what the best disposition is of the existing assets that you have, potentially selling those or leasing those to other parties to create revenue that could come- those to other parties to create revenue that could come back in and help fund some of this development.
I know Tom's going to tap me on the shoulder in about a minute, but I'd like to close with this. This is a transformative moment for Waco and us. We feel like it's a we. It's not just the city. It's the team that you choose has to be part of this visioning process. And you have to touch every citizen in your city. You can't leave anybody behind. And that's something that I think we take great pride in when we do these projects. We do big master plan communities that are sports-anchored. And why? Because sports, no matter what anybody else tells you, is a nucleus to bring people into your community. And I think that we've got the experience to do that. We understand how to do that and we understand what it means to the city. And in my next 30 seconds, I just want to say, I don't know if the judge is still here. I don't want to dunk. We have an ambassador. So we do have, just to throw that out, we talk about residential experience. We have Emmett Smith. We also have Ambassador Siegel, who, back in the day, put Jeb Bush into real estate. And with the ambassador, we've got experience in over 60,000 units nationwide on residential. So with that, four seconds, thank you very much for having us.
Any questions for the group? Questions or comments? Guys, thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there being no further business, we will adjourn this meeting, right? At 5:00 PM. Thanks.